Okay, do you all want to ask for the Pledge of Legions? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your call?
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Will C.?
Here.
Gump?
Here.
Fletcher?
Here.
Brock?
Here.
Meeting is called to order. Okay. We don't have an executive session. So... We don't have any visitors that wanted to talk. So in the President's Report, we will do the commendations. Okay, the way we do this is, um, I'll call out the names, and I'll say, if they're here, I'll say what they did. And then come up and get your certificate, and then come around and shake everybody's hand, and then go back. No one bites, trust me.
Make sure when you're coming around the table-
Oh yeah, watch out for the cord.
-we have a light cord right here, I just want to be careful.
Yeah, okay. All right, Caitlin Anderson. Paul Kelly. Tristan Francis. Emma Rose Bucker. Thank you for the ones that came. Hayden Youngblood. Logan Robinson. Jagger Atkinson. Christopher Moore. Colin Holly. Okay. Okay, Colin? This is from a pride card, and it's from Mrs. Benson. And Mrs. Benson said Colin always pays attention in class, participates in discussions, and is always prepared for class. So, Mrs. Benson is very thankful for that. Do you have a copy of this? You probably will get one, you want the extra one? Okay, Draven Lewis. Clayton Smith. And Clayton got his pride card from Ms. Riley. It says, "Was caught being good in the hallway by Mrs. Moon." That's pretty something, being caught being good. "Clayton was standing under the stairs being quiet and waiting to enter our room. Thanks and keep up the good work." Very nice. That's usually not the case. Do you want the extra copy? Okay. William DeFrate? Did I say that right? DeFrate? William DeFrate. And William got this from Mrs. Plissiter. "William is a great role model and has excellent manners. He always tells me please and thank you in computer lab." Good job, William. Then Hunter Barton. No, okay. All right. Do you want the extra copy? Mrs. DeFrate, do you want the extra copy?
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, all right. And that's all for this month, so thank you all, and you do not have to stay for the meeting, even though we think it's gonna be short, but we know how that is. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it. Okay. I also have a couple things, I know it's not on the agenda, but just to add a couple things. We recently had Veterans Day celebration here at the school, and this is the first time I've missed it in I don't know how many years because I had something out and I had to go to the doctor. But, um, from what I understand, everybody that came had a great time as always, and the program was wonderful, and the food was wonderful, and it is one of my favorite things. So, um, I wanna thank the high school and the primary school, does the middle school? They just kinda blend with the, yeah. Well, we try and fit them all in. They come at 8:00 in the high school, and then 10:00 in the primary school. By then, most of them are tired, so... But, uh, it was on Tuesday, and from what I understand, it was great as usual, so thank you for all that you did.
Can I dovetail off that?
Sure.
Um, it's kinda funny, I spent most of Tuesday, or a lot of Tuesday, with somebody who is a veteran, and I never even thought to say, uh, congratulations and thank you for your service, but we have, in case you didn't know, Vicky Brock is a veteran, and just wanted to say thank you very much for your service.
Yeah, but you missed the breakfast this year. She was at Capital Conference.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I consume no. And then, um, the other thing I wanted to say was there was Capital Conference, which is where, um, school board goes to take classes and that sort of thing every year. Superintendents and treasurers also go, um, and several, just from what I've talked to a few of you, you had some really good sessions. And, um, Brian was recognized for 25 years of service on the school board, and his family surprised him.
Yeah, that was a point of surprise. I came behind, from behind the curtain, and there they were.
So that was nice, that was great, congratulations.
I wondered why she insisted I go, because I was like, eh, you know.
Now you don't.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for the state. I saw some of you in August.
We were all there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So you left the stage.
There were several up there, there were several board members there.
Yeah.
So that was very nice. And, um, and then I wanted to, just real quick, see if anybody wanted to say anything about Capital Conference. I know Ken was saying that they got lots of compliments, they were tracking us down wherever they went, so...
Absolutely. The reception we had from a presentation from Matt in regards to our drug policy was so well-received. It was almost unheard of to see a session be as engaging and so thoughtful. Matt did a tremendous job with the presentation. We think are legal, that also were there to assist. We were followed out of the conference area, lobbies, elevators. The reception was one of curiosity, and they were so appreciative of the presentation. And it is a, we knew going into this that it was a controversial subject, but it was so well-received, and they actually have a framework from our district that they can work from. And it's not something that is punitive, it's definitely something that is a deterrent, and they were so interested in that aspect of our programming. And this was a, um, this was something that really put Waterloo in the forefront of the state. And so I can't tell you how proud I was to be a part of the presentation, as well as the reception that we garnered from all of our peers down at Capital Conference. And I think we can, a big appreciation to our administrators and to Matt in helping us to do what we all feel is the right thing to do for our kids.
Is there any way, is that streamed anyway? Was that-
It was not videotaped.
...videotaped at all? Okay.
They took pictures, but there was no footage, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Maybe YouTube sensation or whatever.
Does anybody else wanna make any comments about Capital?
Matt did do an excellent job. One of the other topics that was there that was discussed was dual credit. And they had a big, it was a big open session, and a big part of a discussion on dual credit, and why its advantages are, and stuff like that. And I thought it was very interesting. We've been, you know, something the state is pushing now, starting to push to all the schools, and we've been doing that for, I wanna say, five years? Something like that. So again, you know, we're kinda-
Maybe four.
Yeah.
But we did it before EMI got here.
I would say it was like-
So, you know, once again, we were somewhat ahead of the curve on that one.
At least four, right?
Yeah, at least four. So we were ahead of the curve on that one. So that was also nice to see that, you know, you always wonder how you're doing. You hope you're doing your best, and you're, you know, and all that kinda stuff, but you always, it's nice to go down there and see where you, how you're lining up with what other school districts are doing, and things like that. Two very positive aspects, I thought, right there, that we're kinda leading the, we're in front of the curve as opposed to behind the curve, so it's always a good thing.
You came at it from another angle with Maplewood, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I was down in between boards. But, um, you know what? Everybody had really positive things to say about Matt, and, you know, they were really impressed with that whole presentation as well, especially, you know, the parts that Ken mentioned, the, um, how the punishments are held up and everything. And, um, and there, right? Everybody was trying to track you down everywhere you went. Oh, you guys are from Waterloo, who you cited at the trade show, wanna talk to you, everywhere you are. It was very, very positive.
Great, wonderful. Vicky?
You know, it was your first time.
It was always overwhelming. It helped me a lot to understand my place, and, you know.
It's really helpful. I mean, I think it's very helpful.
The one thing that I really made an impression on me also is because we interacted with so many people that are board members, and it really made me grateful for the opportunity to work on a board with my peers. I talked to a lot of people down there who, their boards are somewhat dysfunctional. And it is such a, it's such a pleasure to have a board where we can come in and work together. And we're not always gonna agree, and sometimes it gets knock-down, drag-out, ugly. But, you know, the thing is, at the end of the day, we really work well together, and it shows that we put aside our personal agendas to do what's right for the kids, and to do what's right for Waterloo. And it's such a good feeling to know that we're five people that can work together to see that these things get done. And we're not a disruptive presence to the district. And I think that we should all feel very fortunate for that, so...
Yeah, you're absolutely right, 'cause the last dinner that I attended with all of us, I felt going back and forth, I had many board members from all over the different districts say, "I can't believe how you go back and forth like that all the time. You get along with all of them?" And I'm like, "Yeah, why?" We all get along really well, and-
We even read books together.
Yeah, we do. But, yeah.
Mr. Plissiter? Yes, we do.
I guess you're next, really.
Can someone else type up answers on some of those?
There's some room to type up here.
That's right.
But, yeah. It is really out there, I really, I didn't know I'd lose that. I mean, I was surprised too, that one time, but, yeah.
That's it. Well, thank you. Thank you all. All right, superintendents' report?
I did wanna address the fact that we did add some commendations at the end of the board packet. Sandy Arbogast put together a list of everybody that was instrumental in the grandparents' day, the 28th grandparents' day. And, you know, there were 780 registered, we at least had that much. And I know that this was the first time that my parents were able to go for Jacqueline, and they were just, they were so very excited, and it was a great experience. So I'd like to thank Anthony, I'd like to thank Sandy, and everybody that really put it on this list, and more, who were making this a successful event. So I wanted to make sure we saw that, that's on the last sheet there. The only thing I have for you tonight is that the impact group provided feedback to the administrative team on the listening tours, and we are working together on an action plan for how to move forward based on that feedback. And when that action plan is created, I will share that with all of you. Right now, it is in the developing stage of going through and sifting through all of the information, and trying to develop a plan where we can move forward and show the community that we really did hear what it said, and we were, and we are continually trying to improve our practice. So when that is completed, I will share that with you, and we will get going.
Is there a list of suggestions or comments?
There is.
Is that something that we can include in-
Yes, but I was gonna just put that with the, so I wanted to give you both together.
Okay, that's fine.
I wanted to give you all the comments, and then what we sifted through and made sense of, and what we came up with for a plan.
Okay, okay, so we will get the list?
Yeah, we will get both together.
Great.
Were they well-attended?
There was 40 people throughout all three sessions, and I will tell you, in the grand scheme of our attendance rate, for some of these events, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
And there was some very thoughtful and constructive criticism and praises that were offered, and we're eager to put it together and move forward. And then also, now that we're continually be asking for feedback from the community to make sure that those relationships are strong and intact. So stay tuned, I guess is the moral of the story.
Good.
That's all I have under my report.
Thank you. Todd, your agenda report?
Just for the agenda night, the addendum. We need to add consent agenda, superintendents' business items K and L, and the treasure business item P. And we also added number 12, for separate votes.
Maplewood, same?
Maplewood's meeting was extremely short last month because we had our all-boards dinner. And between pictures and the dinner, the meeting did not last very long. But we had a very good speaker there that night. His name was Ekram Christopher, and he presented on Team Truth, and he travels all over the world. And it's something that I think all sports coaches, anybody affiliated with sports should actually really read, or watch his videos. It was really interesting to see that that night, the ones that were there. I think you guys agree that, you know, it was a very good presentation, and the dinner, of course, was always excellent, so... And that's really about it, that's all we did that night.
He was really good in the fact that he talked about, you know, impacting somebody's day, or impacting somebody else's life, and it's not a matter of, and he talked about the little things that we can do, you know, just by, you know, saying a kind word to somebody, or whatever, you know, being positive, and cheerful, and that kinda stuff. It was really, you know, it's not-
Doesn't take much.
Doesn't take much. I mean, you know, obviously there are the big things you can do, but there's a lot of little things you can do. He was pretty cool.
Thank you. Dan, what's your opinion about this?
Uh, the General Assembly is back in session. Of course, it's the lame duck session. But, uh, the, uh, the good thing is, um, they will likely be going hot and heavy until mid-December. At this time, you'll see a lot of bills. If you go into your OSBA bill tracker and review what's on the agenda. Common Core is out of committee now. There's a number of bills. One of particular interest is 629. And, um, so there's some real aspects of that to see where it goes. I would suggest that you take time to review the bills and see where they're at. By next month, we should be having some more concrete answers as to the direction that, it seems like they wait till the last minute, and everything happens. So it'll be popping pretty heavy right now. There's a lot of interesting things coming up. We'll see where it goes. That's it.
Does anybody have anything under new business? The only thing I have is, um, there's, I know, on Fox 8 News lately, they've been having, like, it's a car giveaway, but it's a benefit to, for people with Hutchinson's disease. And we have that, we have a few people here in the school that are affected by that. It's kinda like a combination of Lou Gehrig's and Parkinson's, I mean, all of that, it's not, it's not good. It's, um, usually you get it when you're in your 40s, and it's hereditary, so if someone has it, if a parent has it, and usually goes through the men, and it's a, but we have a family in this community that three out of four adult children have it. So, um, it's just something, I mean, I don't know if you wanna put, you know, buy, take it for a car, but you can give a donation too. So, but you can get on fox8news.com, or however it, I don't mind sure what the website is, but it's something like that. And, um, but it's very, it, you know, they've been doing all week, they've been interviewing people that have it, and, um, and just watching it is really heart-wrenching to see what it does. It takes away, you know, it takes away someone young, in their young years, and a lot of times it don't last long with it. But it's just, it, like I said, the family in this community, it's been, it's been really, really hard on them. And, um, I just, I just think that if you can support it, because it hits home, so, um, that was all that I had. Anybody else have anything?
Are we doing any locally?
Pardon me?
Are we doing any locally for the conference?
No, no, I mean, I don't know if they, if they want that. I still have to work on that, but I just, it just happened to, you know, I'd known about it for a couple months, and then it came on Fox 8, and I was like, "Oh my gosh, this is, this is it." And they're doing something about it. And I thought, well, Ally LaForce, I don't know if you hear her, she's local, and she married a baseball player or something from Weston. His mother's the one that has it. So I think that's why Fox 8, because she's on that channel. But I think that's why they're doing it. But, um, but like I said, I didn't even know what we could do at this point. So this is a start, at least it's something, so maybe we can go from there, so... And I can talk to you about it, about it later.
Sure, and I'll make sure I find the link and then put it up, get the page at the bare minimum.
Okay.
While we're working through conversations, I think we can move forward.
Okay.
I have something too. The community's also doing the Clinton Porfins Benefit Dinner stuff.
That's this weekend, right?
About 6:00 to 8:00?
6:00 to 8:00 on Saturday?
Correct.
Where's that?
It is at the, I think it's at the Randolph.
Town Hall.
Yeah.
Senior Center in Mission.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it's at-
That's Saturday?
Yeah, the Randolph Community Center.
Isn't it 6:00 to 8:00?
6:00 to 8:00.
How much is it a plate? Seven or eight?
Um, it's, uh, $7.00 an adult, $4.00 children. They'll have raffles, pictures with Santa, um, a donation box. And that's it. Fake goods.
Thank you. Um, the only other thing I had was, I sent you that picture. I do think we need to do something about signage. I don't know if that, there's still money left in the grant, or something.
I know they were working on the slides, so I'll send that around.
Or even maybe, like I suggested, cut along the road and leave the high grass, it looks like they did it backwards. So I would prefer if we cut the grass along the driveway and leave the high grass in the back. Kent, like I said, I was up at Kent State, and they do it like down in the dipway. I wanna support Kent, but at the same time, you know, I like the school grounds a little bit. Or put signage so that people know why it's the way it is. People all agree on that.
And where was it on the campus that you saw it?
When you walk into the, what's the rec center? The MAC Center? Is it called the MAC Center? No, not the MAC Center, it's called something else at Kent.
I mean, it's like, so it's a rec center, though?
Yeah, it's where you go for, no, where you go for like swimming lessons and stuff. Not the student center, like the gym, but-
The editorial?
Yeah.
No, I know what you're talking about.
Because they have a, they have a MAC, which is in the campus, but this is out-
Yeah, that's the rec center as well.
Yeah, it's where, I think our kids go there for-
It's on the left.
It's called the rec center, or is it called? When you're walking in, it's right on the left. The signage is there, but I'll try to get a better picture, I just, it's like they're doing a tour, so... Anyway, all right, um, consent agenda, do you have anything you wanna point out?
Thank you. It's a kind of a lengthy agenda, so I just wanted to touch on a few things. I forgot to talk about this in the superintendents' report, so forgive me. We do have two weeks' worth of bus totals for attendance, and those were scanned in, and I'm gonna put them in the update for next week. So remember, we were counting attendance, where the AM and the PMs, we have all that information. Just got it this morning. I'll get that to you, and not, remember, there won't be an update tomorrow, but next Friday. Okay?
Is that, is it, how's that? Is that generally running as expected, or are we surprised by anything?
We weren't surprised. It was running as expected.
Okay.
Okay, so the things I would like to talk about, and I will be brief, I promise. Letter A is the agreement for the archery program. And remember, they cover a portion of the cost, we cover a portion of the cost. It's a partnership between them, so that is that contract. So we have some resignations, so Sabrina Kizner stepped down as the middle school basketball coach. You will see that Stephanie Hamilton took her place later in the, um, later in the agenda. Dana Pavlik stepped down as a bus driver, but you will see later in the agenda that she, and that's due to her schedule that she has through college. But you will see that she joined a team as a substitute bus driver. So you'll see people kinda moving. Matt Flanagan stepped down as varsity coach, but then went to the middle school. So he just switched spots as well. Lori Turner is the wonderful lady that we have in the kindergarten classroom as an aide. She's actually in my daughter's class, and she's doing a great job. Then you will see some supplementals there. You'll see Stephanie Hamilton, as I told you. Then we have a, um, letter G is the contract for Ashley Bissecker. Ashley Bissecker has been here all year, but she was waiting on a test for licensure, and she has since successfully passed that. So now she's changing rates because she is officially licensed in that area now. H is all of the updates to the policy that Pebble and Wagner manage, and they do this to us, not do this to us, they put them, they try to wait once or twice a year, and they make a long list of them. These are not new policies, these are just, um, I guess, yeah, updates to existing policy. So what you got in the board packet was the summary of the changes, and then in the new policies, you can read the whole thing. I have a whole stack of things as well that kinda puts it all together, but I gave you guys just a summary. Page two, that was the most important. Nothing too crazy in that list, to tell you the truth. It really is just cleaning up some stuff based on what's slated changes. I is a big one, that's on the next page. We are moving educational service centers. We've been talking about this for a while, and we're ending our contract with Portage County ESC and moving to Cuyahoga ESC effective July 1 of next school year. So we will remain with Portage County ESC for the duration of this year, for the school year, and then we will start our new contract with the Cuyahoga ESC July 1. We'll start meeting with Cuyahoga ESC as early as January to start planning that transition, to ensure that it's a seamless transition from one ESC to the next. I'm very excited about this move. I feel like Cuyahoga has a lot to offer for us, and they have been more than willing to work with us and ensure that they're gonna be meeting our needs. So that is I. Then J shows that we're changing the substitute bus rate from $12.00 per hour to $14.00 an hour. That is to hopefully incentivize people to come over and help subsidize, because we're on insurance. So that was a strategy that Todd and I came up with, to hopefully get more people on board driving for us, as opposed to maybe other districts. So we're trying to attract more people here. And then I'm gonna go over to the consent agenda under the addendum. There is an MOU there under L, and that is acknowledging the memorandum of understanding between the Waterloo Local School Board and the WBA, and that's the final piece of the puzzle to evaluation. And it is clearing up what forms we are using for those teachers who qualify for skilled and, um, accelerated, kinda accomplished, my mind is blank. Oh my gosh, sorry about that. Skilled and accomplished teachers are evaluated under the one observation versus the two every second year, every third year. And this MOU is clearing up the forms that we use for those evaluations. That's all I have under my consent.
Todd, do you have anything under the list for the consent agenda?
No, everything, group's office, can I ask you any questions?
May I talk to one of your ideas?
Sure.
Under the treasury business, letter F, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say there's a wonderful thing. A lady came in, Cheryl Merco came in to the board office with a $500 check as a donation to the elementary and middle school library. She's a substitute here and she came in and she loves the kids and she wanted us to be able to buy them some new books and she just walked in and was so happy to help us. And we were so grateful for that donation.
What was her name?
That's F under the addendum.
Got it.
That's all I have to say under the treasury business.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So, move.
Second. Any questions or comments? Will call?
Was it there?
Yes.
Will see?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Now, move forward to what's wrong? Do I have a motion to accept, no, no. Motion to issue a contract to Chad Loudon for Cisco Boys Basketball Middle School.
So, move on. One second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, Will call?
Superterry?
Yes.
Will see?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Brock?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Okay, second, second. No objections, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for coming. Oh, I forgot to tell you this. Just bringing you for this Sunday meeting. If you can get them to me soon, that's fine. Do you have a motion?
Yes.
If you can get them to me.